City Council on September seventeen, twenty twenty four at six oh seven P M. Greetings, everyone. To connect with the council meeting, you can use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. We do have online public comments open for this evening's study session on the budget. You may post comments of any link directly to LakewoodSpeaks.org. That's our online forum for public comments. We'll be leaving that open this evening and through tomorrow at ten A M. For any comments that are related specifically to tonight's presentation. And with that, I will just welcome everybody to the twenty twenty four budget season. This is the first of several meetings where we will go through this lovely book. Maybe not page by page, but we'll start out this evening. We've got a presentation will be coming to us through from our CFO. And then also we'll be hearing from a number of department directors going down a little bit deeper in the budget and how it is applied within their own department. So council has been sending questions over to our city staff around this budget. And not all of those will we talk about verbally, but it gives us the opportunity to put the questions as well as the answers up on LakewoodSpeaks.org. So if you're following this process, I would suggest that you not only watch for that as part of the meeting information that's available tonight, but we will also be having two other meetings with regards to this topic next month. It is per our charter that we must pass the budget by November first. So this will keep us pretty busy over the next few weeks. With that, I will go ahead and ask if the clerk will please call the wall.
Strom.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Levier.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Mia Carrero.
Here.
Nice, Strom.
Here.
Over. I don't see Counselor over. Ryan.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
And Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. So with that, I will go ahead and introduce our first speaker tonight, Holly Bjorkland, our Chief Financial Officer. And she will kick us off with this evening's presentation before handing it over to some of our department directors, as I mentioned, to go a little bit deeper in each of their departments. After our budget presentation this evening, we will have time for council questions and answers. As I mentioned, though, we do have the encouragement to everybody to send questions in so that they can be researched to the extent that they need to. These are questions that are a lot more complex than sometimes what we're used to seeing and require a little bit more research. So we will have time this evening for questions. However, if you're following this topic, please be sure also to keep an eye on Lakewood Speaks to see additional ones. And with that, I will go ahead and hand over the floor to Holly Bjorkland, our Chief Financial Officer. Good evening, Ms. Bjorkland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being interested in the budget. I'm gonna share the presentation. Please let me know if you can see it.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so this evening, we will be presenting a high-level summary of the city manager's proposed budget for twenty twenty four revised and twenty twenty five budget. Besides hearing from me, you'll also hear from Amber Till, the Acting Director of Community Resources, Travis Parker, the Chief of Sustainability and Community Development, Corey Peterson, the Chief of Operational Services, and Max Kirschbaum, the Director of Public Works. This is a lengthy presentation, but I hope you will find it informative and interesting. Just a note, the format of the budget presentation has been updated to ensure compliance with the new Colorado accessibility standards. Okay. This study session is the first of four meetings discussing the proposed budget. The next meeting will be on September eighteenth with the Budget and Audit Board. Then the first reading will be on October seventh and the second reading on October twenty first. What we will cover this evening is economic statistics, overview of the budget process, planning for the future, a high-level review of the city manager's proposed budget for twenty twenty four revised and twenty twenty five budget. Then we'll discuss the general capital and Tabor funds. After I have covered the financials, we will have department updates on projects that have been completed underway and what is planned in the proposed budget. Finally, we will be available for questions. And speaking of questions, thank you all for your questions. You haven't, if you haven't seen them yet, the first iteration of the Q and As was sent to you and posted on Lakewood Speaks at four thirty. Please take a look, and several of you had similar questions. So we will start with economy process and planning. This slide shows the trends of specific economic statistics that provides a high-level view of what is happening in Lakewood's economy. The stats show income is continuing to increase for residents. Income increased by ten percent over last year. However, the average home price has increased by six point five percent and average monthly housing rents have increased by three percent. Additionally, mortgage rates have declined by point five percent and are maintaining at a higher level of six point five percent. Consumer Price Index, or inflation, has decreased by two point three percent, which has come down by almost half of last year's inflation in July of twenty twenty three. Employment rates remain high but has declined by one percent and population remains consistent with twenty twenty three. Not on the slide, but important to note is that commercial vacancies continue to fall from high-level experience during the pandemic. Remote work and online shopping still impacts these measures, but retail vacancy rates have recovered to six point four percent, industrial to five point seven percent, and office still lagging at fourteen percent. The City of Lakewood uses the following process to ensure that the proposed annual budget is financially responsible and addresses operational commitments. The city council goals and community priorities set the foundation for where resources should be allocated. Inputs are also gathered throughout the year from the Budget Motte Board, city council, community members, and staff. The type of revenue that is estimated are taxes, fees, grants, and other sources of income. Based on the available revenue, expenses are prioritized. This step involves deciding which projects and services are most critical and the timing of spending. The next, next to the existing fund balances, next are the existing fund balances and evaluating there is adequate reserves and to determine how much of the available funds can be allocated for spending each year. Now we are starting the review process. And staff have been looking forward to hearing questions and input from city council, residents, and the Budget and Audit Board. Many hours have been dedicated to the budget process to ensure collaboration and effective teamwork to create a budget that is sustainable and is focused on providing quality programs and services for the community. I'd like to thank all that were involved in this process to date and in particular, special thanks to the city manager, the department directors, staff, and the budget team, Matthew Wassenberger, Patrick O'Brien, and Jacob Phelan. As part of the annual budget process, a plan is also developed for the next five years. To create this plan, again, we need to evaluate revenue. The city revenues are beginning to stabilize after an unpredictable economy that has been affected by the global supply chain and price increases. Only modest growth is expected in future years. Additionally, expenses repriorization will need to be made if the Tabor limits return in twenty twenty six. As discussed in prior years, there is significant investment that is needed in the city's infrastructure. Strategically, the city has been saving in the General Fund and the Capital Improvement Fund for these investments and community support. In twenty twenty four revised and twenty twenty five proposed budget, some of these investments have been proposed to begin or continue, which are in alignment with the infrastructure needs and the city council goals. A few examples of these are coal fact safety projects, maintenance campus, bike lanes, Whitlock Solar, and multi-prom solutions for addressing the concerns of unhoused and affordable housing. Investment in these areas are proposed to continue in the next five years. Now I'll provide a high-level overview of the proposed budget. The city has seventeen different funds and they are grouped into five types. You can see this slide, on the slide, the groupings and the specific funds. The largest group and fund is the General Fund, which can be used for any purpose. Capital project funds, which are primarily for acquisitions or construction and maintenance of capital facilities. The two capital project funds the city has are Capital Improvement and Equipment Replacement Fund. Enterprise funds are government-owned businesses that have no more than ten percent state or local government funding. This includes four funds, the golf course, and three utility funds, SOAR, stormwater, and water. Special revenue funds are restricted funds allocated to discrete purposes. Lakewood has a Conservation Trust, Economic Development, Heritage, Culture, and Arts, Open Space Grants, and Tabor Funds. Internal service funds are used to account for costs that are shared or allocated across multiple departments. Excuse me. And funds such as medical, dental, and other insurance-related costs. Now that we have covered the city funds, we will review the city's different types of revenue. You can see that taxes are the largest portion at sixty percent of total revenue. Taxes primarily include sales tax, property tax, and use tax. The second source of revenue is charged for services at twenty-two percent, such as rec centers and golf course charges, as well as water, SOAR, and stormwater fees. Internal government revenue at thirteen percent is primarily federal and state grants. Then we have investment income, licenses, permits, fines, and forfeitures, and all other revenue. This slide displays how all city funds are spent by department. The distribution has changed from last year due to a reorganization with economic development moving to finance and building maintenance moving to a newly created operational services branch along with I T and H R. Planning is now the Sustainability and Community Development Branch and will have a new Housing and Livable Communities Division. For the distribution of expenses, Public Works is the largest at thirty percent, which is primarily cost of materials. Police is at twenty-two percent, which is primarily people. Community Resources at fifteen percent, which is half people and half materials. Then we have the non-departmental at ten percent, which is citywide expenses. Operational Services at nine percent, Finance at six, and all other departments at six. And finally, Municipal Courts at two percent. This slide reflects the revised changes for twenty twenty four budget in revenue and expense. Total revenue is projected to increase two hundred thousand dollars from twenty twenty four approved budget to the twenty twenty four revised budget. Forecasts for building materials, use tax, and building permits were reduced based on the current development patterns. In addition, forecast franchise charges from Xcel Energy were reduced as energy prices have come down from twenty twenty three record highs. These reductions have been offset by investment income, which is outperforming the original twenty twenty four budget in which funds are earning more interest due to higher interest rates. Major expenditure increases from the twenty twenty four approved budget to the twenty twenty four revised budget insist mostly of carryforwards of programs and projects from twenty twenty three that cannot be completed until twenty twenty four due to supply chain issues and resource constraints. While inflation is coming down, it remains high for healthcare-related costs, which has resulted in an increased city premiums. Some of these costs are offset with higher staffing vacancies than originally budgeted. These are the staff changes for the proposed budget. Twenty twenty four revised budget includes five positions that are intended to support core services. These positions are, one, a community development block grant coordinator that manages and allocates the funds for improving living conditions and economic opportunities for low and moderate-income people. One, H R system analyst to provide efficiencies and enhancements to the city's new system. Two, city attorneys to help meet workload with new legal cases. One court martial to address staffing needs impacted by new state regulations. Twenty twenty five budget includes seven new positions. Two sustainability planners to set building performance standards. These are grant-funded. Two variable staff moving to part-time. One economic resiliency position for supporting affordable housing and unhoused initiatives funded by economic development. One park maintenance worker and one arborist to conduct park maintenance funded by open space. And one paralegal to alleviate administrative work in the city attorney's office. Now we'll review the general capital and Tabor funds. Our general fund revenue eighty percent comes from taxes versus sixty percent displayed on the all revenue slide. Primarily, this is because total revenue for the city has more changes for services from the enterprise funds and all revenue includes intergovernmental revenue. You can see the general fund also has licenses and permits, investments, and other revenue as well. Sales tax is the largest revenue the city receives. So being as accurate as we can is an important part of the budgeting process. Throughout the year, finance uses resources such as the Office of State Planning and Budgeting, the Colorado Legislative Council, and the Federal Reserve Systems Forecast for Consumer Price Index, or inflation, which is a large factor in forecasting the change in sales tax. On this slide, inflation is excluded to show the real growth for the city. Utilizing this information and internal trends, staff have reforecasted twenty twenty four real growth from two point six percent to point one percent and forecasted just under one percent for twenty twenty five sales tax growth. Twenty twenty three came in at one percent real growth. In this pie chart, we have a breakout of the top five industries that generate sales tax. Restaurants, retail, services, utilities, household products, and other. A diverse sales tax makeup is critical for Lakewood's financial stability as it reduces vulnerability to downturns if one industry were impacted by market changes. The source of the city's sales tax revenue has shifted since two thousand nineteen. These pie charts represent the percentage of sales tax that is generated from brick-and-mortar locations versus online sales and deliveries. These deliveries are from brick-and-mortar locations to buyers. The reason staff started to focus on this split in revenue is because in two thousand nineteen, staff started to see a trend of brick-and-mortar revenue declining and there was not a corresponding increase in online or delivery revenue. With efforts of staff and approval from city council, the sales tax code was updated in twenty twenty one. The tax code was simplified and made more consistent with the state so that it is easier for businesses to file taxes with the city. Besides simplifying submissions of taxes for businesses, the change also resulted in better compliance and recapturing some of the sales tax that shifted from brick-and-mortar to online and delivery. The shift of twenty-seven percent to thirty-nine percent in online and delivery sales tax has been a gradual shift since twenty twenty one, even as stores reopen after the pandemic. Online ordering and delivery appears to be a consumer habit that will continue to expand. We have an example of property tax for home values at six hundred thousand. As you can see, the city gets smaller. A portion of this revenue, which is five percent of the four thousand three hundred and seventy-three the taxpayer would pay for this home, two hundred and twenty-four dollars would go to the city of Lakewood. Now we will talk about general fund revenue. This graph shows you the twenty twenty three unaudited actuals, the twenty twenty four adopted, oops. Second. The twenty twenty four adopted budget and the twenty four revised budget, the twenty twenty five proposed budget, and the twenty twenty six through twenty twenty nine forecast. The striped bars show you the projected Tabor transfer or refund amount. Returning to refunding above the Tabor limit will start in twenty twenty six. As you can see, for the out years, we are expecting a gradual increase in general fund revenue. The growth is estimated, on average, three percent for fiscal year twenty five through twenty nine, which includes inflation. This slide shows the general fund expenses for twenty twenty three unaudited actuals, twenty twenty four adopted budget, twenty twenty four revised budget, the twenty twenty five proposed, and the forecast from twenty six through twenty nine. The solid green bars show the annual operating costs, including transfers out to other funds to continue services at the current level, which shows a gradual upward trend. The large grid and the striped bars show significant one-time projects and investments from the general fund. For twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight, these projects are community support services at forty-five million dollars, partial funding for the new maintenance campus at seven million dollars, and North Dry Gulch project at nineteen point seven million dollars for floodplain mitigation, which the Stormwater Fund is planning to borrow from the general fund. The combination of the general fund revenue, expense, and transfers creates the fund balance. This has the same columns as the previous two slides, starting with twenty twenty three unaudited actuals going through twenty twenty nine forecast. As mentioned earlier, the city has intentionally saved these funds from twenty twenty through twenty twenty three for spending on future investments. From twenty three to twenty four, you can see the saving investments funds starting to be spent with the purchase of a new maintenance campus this summer and starting on community support services. The fund balance is at eighty-two point two million dollars and is expected to be reduced to fifty-eight million dollars by the end of twenty twenty four. In twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, there is a plan to provide an internal loan to the Stormwater Fund to complete the North Dry Gulch project. Additionally, the community support services will continue with major spending through twenty twenty eight. With these capital projects and internal loan, the general fund is projected to still maintain the minimum ten percent reserve. This is just the start of planning for future investments. The other speakers this evening will touch on some of these additional investments that will need to be made due to city aging infrastructure and new needs. Now shifting to the Capital Improvement Fund, you can see on this slide the Capital Improvement Fund for twenty twenty three unaudited actuals through twenty twenty nine forecast for the fund balance. As we have discussed with the general fund, there has been intentional savings from twenty twenty through twenty twenty three to support the investment needed in infrastructure and community support. The large decline for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four is due to the land purchase for the Public Works Maintenance Campus that was completed this year. This graph also displays the planned drawdown for fund balance from twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine to make continued investments needed in infrastructure and community support. Next, we'll talk about Tabor, otherwise known as the Taxpayer's Bill of Rights. Tabor is a Colorado constitutional amendment that limits government revenue increases to inflation plus a small growth factor. Here is the calculation. C P I plus local growth equals allowable growth. Consumer Price Index, or C P I, includes common consumer spending items such as fuel, clothing, food, housing, other costs like that. Local growth is identified as new construction. Tabor requires two limit calculations, overall revenue and property tax. On average, about seventy percent of the total city revenue are subject to the Tabor limit. In two thousand eighteen, the voter approved retaining approved retaining the twelve point five million proposed refund to be used for park plans and open space. to be used for parklands and open space, infrastructure and transportation, and police needs. These funds have been spent. The remaining years, 1/3 of the Tabor refunds are allocated to open space and parkland needs, 1/3 to infrastructure and transportation, and 1/3 to police. This slide shows what was historically refunded and what was transferred to the Tabor fund. The refunded Tabor dollars are the striped blue bars and the retained Tabor dollars are the green bars. The 2023 unaudited general fund transfer to the Tabor fund is expected to be approximately $13.9 million. This transfer is 3.3 million higher than the 2022 actuals for various reasons, but one of the major drivers is a $2.6 million shift in the unrealized value of the city's investments. Typically booked at a given point in time, unrealized gains or losses of city investments is factored into the Tabor revenue growth calculation. But there is no actual gain or loss to revenue as the assets have not been sold. Since this $2.6 million is unrealized value of city investments, it is not, is not, is not revenue as, is not revenue the city has actually received. We have identified this separately on the 2023 column with green stripes. Without this included, the 2023 Tabor calculation is $11.3 million. The Tabor transfer estimate for the out years is based on a rolling six-year average. For 2024, the estimated Tabor transfer is $8.3 million. You will see on the next six slides, the Tabor funds are being used for a significant number of projects in various stages of completion. On this slide, we have a parkland and open space Tabor spending. The focus for this area has primarily been acquisitions and improvements. 70 acres have been purchased with $8.6 million and there has been $3.7 million invested in park improvements. The cost of maintaining the additional acreage will have to be absorbed by other sources when the Tabor fund has been used up. There is a wide variety of projects under design and development for open space. You can see them on this list. These are the complete projects for infrastructure and transportation. The main focus is a sidewalk maintenance and improvement program and traffic signals. Once these funds are used up, the maintenance of these new sidewalks and traffic signals will need, will need to have alternative funding. These are the projects that are actively under construction or shovel-ready with construction beginning in the near term. These are the future projects for infrastructure and transportation that are beginning the design and development stages. You can see on this slide, there are a few items that the police Tabor funds have been used for such as records management system and police agent and wellness assessments. The reason there have been few projects is primarily the funds are being used and saved for the body worn camera program. This program is made up of physical body cameras, the services to maintain the raw data, and the personnel who manage the data and the program. Since these, this is approximately a million dollar program to maintain annually, the city has intentionally targeted these funds for only body worn cameras since 2021 so that the funds will last longer. Once the funds run out, another source of funding will need to be identified. For this budget, it is proposed that realtime crime center and Axon report writing also uses Tabor funds. These two new programs are utilizing software technology to increase the efficiency of sworn staff. The realtime crime center will assist in identifying more efficiently the number of agents and civilian resources needed for callouts, and the Axon report writing software will create a draft of the police reports. There are many other time-saving benefits for agents that can be realized over these, as these programs continue. Both of these programs will assist in the police chief's focus of not expanding the PD's budget, but instead reallocating resources based on the advantages of changing technology and reevaluating approaches to policing, which are also intended to have the benefit of staying within budget constraints. The Tabor information is periodically updated on the Lakewood Finance website if you or the public want to see more information. I will now turn it over to Amber Tell, the Acting Director of Community Resources.
Give us a second while we promote Amber to panelist status.
Okay, I believe I've been promoted. Everyone can hear me. Okay, great. Thank you, Holly. Good evening, Mayor Strom and Council. Next slide, please. The Community Resources Department is focused on council priority alignment, including the following priority areas: homelessness, public safety, transportation, and infrastructure, and sustainability. The following slides in this presentation will demonstrate placemaking and accessible recreation along with prioritization of parks and open space through community engagement. The Imagine Tomorrow Plan was adopted in 2023 following a statistically valid survey and a year of community input. This include, this included, this indicated needs for new amenities in the community, identified core services, and highlighted the resources needed to maintain the existing level of service that our community is accustomed to. Imagine Tomorrow provides guidance on future improvement projects and programs aligned with community priorities. Next slide. I hope that all of you have had a chance to visit Lakewood's new beautiful Peakview Park located at 2350 South Wadsworth Boulevard. Phase one is complete. We're very excited. This project included public access, a parking lot, hard and soft surf surface trails, signage, and wayfinding, thanks to a $1.5 million in Tabor funds. Next slide. Playground improvements this year included James E. Harrison Park located at 544 South Sim Streets. Improvements at this park included a new shelter and playground, recognizing its namesake, Mr. James E. Harrison, who was a Tuskegee Airman. You'll see the the plane equipment that we have on this slide. This, this playground was funded with open space funds, $270,000. A new playground was also installed at Jefferson Green Park located at 3333 South Field Street, thanks to open space funds of $400,000. One of the Imagine Tomorrow Plan community priorities was to provide more off-leash dog parks in the city. The city opened a new Mount Air Dog Park located at 5620 West 14th Ave. in 2024 after removing the unused concessions building and repurposing the ballfield space in this densifying neighborhood. Survey response to this place base for our four Lakewood friends has been extremely positive. Next slide. The Belmar Park improvements planned for 2025 will include replacement of sections of the observation deck, new trailhead and parking lot, irrigation replacements, and ADA improvements. There is $1.5 million in open space funds currently allocated to these necessary repairs to our popular community park here in Belmar. Next slide. Two Creeks Park is located in a targeted area of the community along Wadsworth Boulevard between 10th and 12th Avenue with an identified need for parkland. Improvements to this park will include a creek crossing, trail system, and a new playground. Drainage improvements will also be completed in partnership with Mile High Flood District. This project is also supported by $450,000 in community development block grant funds. Total cost for this project is approximately $3 million, with $2.2 million coming from open space funds. As Holly mentioned previously, the acquisition of the Car Wash property using Tabor funds allowed for the expansion of this park and access from Wadsworth. Next slide. The new Porter Park at 731 Tabor Street was acquired with, wait for it, Tabor funds of $1.9 million. Funding for development is allocated in 2025, also using Tabor funds, $1,036,000. This project was, this site plan was developed following a year-long community engagement process. This park will include a community garden in partnership with Denver Urban Gardens, picnic areas, an agricultural-themed playground, open lawn areas, and a looped trail. Next slide. Both the Bear Creek Lake Park and the public art plans will go before city council at the end of this year or early next year with recommendations for future needs after significant public engagement with thousands of residents participating in plan development. Funding is set aside for improvements at Bear Creek Lake Park in 2025, including trail work and entry improvements to reduce congestion. Additional Bear Creek Lake Park plan recommendations and new and improved public art will be dependent upon future funding. The city continues to support neighborhood requested projects through the Neighborhood Participation Program Grant. Projects awarded in 2023 are listed here and are now either underway or complete, with the exception of the Metal Lark Playground Replacement Project, the Metal Lark Games Table, that will be completed with the Metal Lark Playground Replacement Project in 2025. There is 220,000 dedicated and open space funds for the Metal Lark Playground Project, as well as 200 through the sale, the 2022 sale of the Denver Broncos. Next slide. Exciting upcoming projects for community resources include a Morse Park Pool Assessment to look at aging mechanical systems and infrastructure. This will be used to determine future improvements. Graham Park improvements will include accessibility improvements, passive use trails, and landscaping that will be funded with Tabor at $230,000. Heritage Lakewood Belmar Park signage plan design is complete and we will phase implementation beginning next year. This is funded through the Open Space Fund with $350,000. Staff is working closely with the Colorado School of Mines and Colorado Parks and Wildlife to further study the Bear Creek Green Belt Trailhead at Wadsworth. You may recall there was also a parkland acquisition there to supplement the trailhead, which has resulted in some redesign of the original site plan, as we are working through that. Solar will be installed at the Whitlock Recreation Center in 2025. This is capital improvement funds of $1,730,000, along with $1 million in grant funding. The Fox Hollow Clubhouse was built in 1983 and is showing significant signs of aging. The Gulf Enterprise Fund will pay for renovations set to begin in the fall of 2025. $3.3 million is allocated from the Gulf Enterprise Fund for this project. There are several aging infrastructure and accessibility-related repairs planned in 2025 at Lakewood Recreation Centers. The most significant is the Carmody Recreation Center Phase One improvements. This phase includes new locker rooms, boiler room, and roof mechanical systems. $1,895,000 is allocated in Conservation Trust and Open Space Funds in 2025 for this phase of the project. And lastly, Wright Park Construction will begin this fall. The project received a $750,000 grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and $2.8 million is allocated from Tabor funds for the Wright Park improvements. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Travis Parker, the Chief of Sustainability and Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here to talk about some exciting things happening in sustainability and community development. As you can imagine, on the next slide, in a department called Sustainability and Community Development, there are a lot of council priorities going on. Among the ones we're going to talk about tonight include sustainability, homelessness, and affordable housing. I'm going to start with sustainability. It's been a huge year for sustainability in Lakewood. As you're aware, we had a reorganization staffing-wise. We've expanded beyond the boundaries of the planning department and now have created a Sustainability and Community Development Department, which includes all of the sustainability staff as well as the other housing and planning folks that you're going to hear about tonight. But it's important to note that a community that's successful in working in sustainability doesn't limit sustainability work to one department or division. And we're trying to create an organization-wide ethos of sustainability. Many of the physicians added in the past few years related to sustainability have been in other departments, including Public Works and Community Resources, with the idea of creating that sustainability focus in all areas of the city's work. There are multiple new project areas happening in sustainability. I'm going to talk about a lot of them tonight in the upcoming slides. But most perhaps interesting is a bunch of new funding sources for sustainability work. These include greenhouse gas fees. So new development projects in Lakewood have to meet greenhouse gas targets. Those that cannot meet those targets contribute money to our greenhouse gas fund. You're also aware the state recently created a 10-cent fee on disposable shopping bags. A portion of those revenues come to Lakewood for use in sustainability functions. And I think so far, we've raised nearly 3/4 of a million dollars from those fees. There are fees in lieu coming in from Article 13. That's the enhanced development menu. That's construction and demolition waste. So additional fees coming in from those sources for sustainable initiatives. And finally, we're consistently pursuing new federal and state grants. There are a huge number of grants out there that are available for sustainability functions. One that you'll hear about tonight is a brand-new $5 million grant for building performance and benchmarking. And there are others that we're constantly pursuing or achieving. So the next few slides talk about some of the current sustainability projects. You will see some of the things on the screen are in green with brackets around them. That indicates brand-new initiatives within the last 12 months. So just to, you know, briefly go through this because you will be hearing from me and the rest of the sustainability staff in depth at our, at a study session on November 4th, where we will go in great depth about all of the great initiatives going on in sustainability in Lakewood. Tonight, you're going to hear about it very briefly from me at a very high level. But obviously, our team works consistently on planning and data tracking. You're about a week away from receiving the latest annual update, the sustainability plan, years, metrics, and targets. We deal ever, in an ever-increasing way in climate action and resilience. This year, we are starting a climate hazard and vulnerability study. We regularly spend a large amount of our time on greenhouse gas management and reporting, and that's reflected in the annual reports as well. A large portion of our work is in energy, water, and built environment. So we have renewable energy and planning projects. We have producing reduction measures. We're working on building electrification citywide and, of course, energy rebates across the board. On the next slide, you can see zero waste and circularity. This is a brand-new focus. At last year's budget hearing, the city council approved a new full-time employee specifically to deal with zero waste and circularity. That employee is now hired and working at full speed to create a bunch of new programs, including dealing with construction demolition waste, creating a Waste Divergent Resource Center, and looking into, or creating a municipal zero-waste program. You'll also hear about more upcoming things in a future slide. um and looking into uh creating a municipal zero waste program. You'll also hear about more upcoming things in a future slide. Um in terms of transportation, we've been working for the past few years on fleet electrification and in public works. Uh Public Works has also been making great strides in uh installation of EV on city properties. Um and we're, we recently committed, uh completed earlier this spring, an EV work plan for the city, so uh it moving forward, what we can do to increase our EV capacity. Uh staff also spends time with tree preservation and tree canopy. That's a big function of of community resources whom you just heard from. On the next slide, we deal with residential water conservation and turf replacement. Um these programs have been going for a couple of years um using grant money. And now that the grant money is out, uh we will continue uh those programs and even expand those programs on the, on the previous slide, Holly, sorry. Um in sustainable development, uh for several years, we've been working with the Enhanced Development Menu. Um and this past year, we've started tracking um greenhouse gas performance standards, and we've started the uh implementation of our construction and demolition waste program. And then obviously, for many years, we've been managing the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program. Um we are at ten neighborhoods right now, and I hope within the next year or two, we will be adding more neighborhoods in our, into our Sustainable Neighborhood Program. So on the next slide, we can talk about what's coming up. A lot of exciting changes. You, you know, you saw that we did a lot more this year than last year. Um we'll have even more exciting things to talk about at next year's budget uh meeting, and you'll be hearing more about these upcoming initiatives at our November uh study session. But just as a preview, um we just received, I I mentioned earlier, a five million dollar grant from the Department of Energy to create a new benchmarking and building performance program. So this will track the energy performance of every large building in the city. And after we've tracked the performance for two years, we'll create a uh some performance standards and requirements for energy use in large buildings to help lower our greenhouse gas production as a city. Um your new Zero Waste and Circularity Planner is working on pilot programs in organic waste, so we can start addressing composting in the city of Lakewood. Uh we're looking at education for recycling and multifamily programs. Our, our current recycling efforts have been heavily toward single family and neighborhoods. Uh we want to expand the, the ability to recycle into multifamily. And then finally, I mentioned our new EV plan. We'll be looking in the coming year at electronic vehicle regulations and and updating the zoning code and municipal regulations for EVs. So that's a quick preview of sustainability. Another big area in our new Sustainability and Community Development Division is um homelessness and affordable housing. We have a new division in the city government called Housing and Thriving Communities. They are doing a lot of great work, including working with our unhoused. So this group works with the homeless navigators in the CAT team to provide street outreach, assess needs, navigate people to safe and emergency shelter and and long-term resources. Um we are hiring a new housing navigator within our department who will work with clients who are ready to secure stable and permanent housing by identifying units, assisting with application, budgeting, and ongoing case management. Um we also deal with encampment cleanup. Um the purpose of the program is to effectively respond to and coordinate legal removal and clearing of unhoused encampments while first providing outreach resources to camp inhabitants. The city has an independent contractor who's brought on last year to work with the CAT team and perform weekly encampment cleanups. And finally, you'll be hearing more in the coming month about our extreme weather shelter program. This started in twenty twenty-three um and continued through the last winter season. This winter, we will again be providing uh sheltering options during extreme weather conditions um at our facility at the NAV Center and potentially other facility, other uh uh voucher programs as well from the county. On the next slide, you can see that we also have a lot of regional efforts uh with other Jeffco cities. We are currently negotiating with all of the municipalities in Jefferson County to uh on an IGA to fund our navigation center in the long term, potentially also our VADA's coming navigation center, and coordinate with those municipalities in the ongoing provision of um resources for the unhoused. We work with um providing money to other nonprofits, including the Jefferson Center for Mental Health to help provide resources and funding for unhoused programs. We are also currently looking at properties around the city for transitional housing. This includes pa- pallet shelters, this include, includes permanent supportive housing that people will move into um as they're transitioning out of homeless, and you will, as the council, see and hear more of that as, as opportunities become available to either purchase properties or find properties to uh accomplish these goals. On the next slide, you are familiar with the Navigation Center that is currently run by Recovery Works. Um thanks to a nine-plus million dollar grant from DOLA, we are on the verge of purchasing that building for long-term use by Recovery Works as a, as the uh Navigation Center. We are set to close this Wednesday, September eighteenth, on that building. Um and then we will immediately start planning for and permitting renovations for improvement of that building. Um and we hope to begin renovations as soon as the extreme weather uh season is over next April. Um the new Livable and Thriving Community Division also on the next slide deals with affordable housing. And one of our big goals as a community is to to provide more affordable housing to ease the housing crunch both in Lakewood and and regionally uh that exists, you know, frankly, across the country. Uh you received a, a email from us recently about our expedited review process. We are now expediting a review of projects for affordable housing with the goal of uh approval within ninety days for those projects. You have also recently reviewed updated zoning regulations for ADUs. Um the city gave a half a million dollars this year for affordable housing programs through the Colorado Gives and expect to continue those uh contributions in coming years. And we also have uh community development block grant money that we spend every year on affordable housing programs, including eviction prevention and rehabilitation of existing affordable single family. Uh also, staff on the next slide is working with the Housing Policy Commission on a number of new initiatives, including uh creation of an Affordable Housing Fund that could potentially help produce a new affordable housing on inclusionary zoning that could require uh new affordable units with market rate projects. And also zoning changes to lot size requirements to, you know, allow for additional affordable units in traditional neighborhoods. And on the final slide, you will see the Neighborhood Support Team Program that that program continues to expand and do good work across the community. Um a few years ago, we started the Lakewood Mediation Services Program that provides mediation services for with volunteer mediators. Um they do now dozens of mediations every year, including referrals from PD, from CR, from Public Works uh and many, the vast majority of our mediations uh reach agreement. Uh this program does block party grants. We do dozens of those a year as well. In fact, uh the one to five hundred dollar grants in the past year have totaled nearly thirty thousand dollars um to local neighborhoods for get-togethers and neighborhood parties. Uh related to that, we have a movie night kit that we read out, uh or loan out to neighborhoods for neighborhood movie nights. And the Neighborhood Support Team runs a bunch of volunteer events as well. You will be seeing information upcoming for uh citywide cleanup days um and neighborhood beautification. Um all of that is run through the Neighborhood Support Team. So now I'd like to turn it over to Corey Peterson, who will be talking about the Operational Services Branch.
Good evening. I am Corey Peterson. I am the Chief of the Operational Services Branch and happy to give you an update to both the council and community. Next slide, Holly. So the Operational Services Budget Request, and specifically the Facilities and Infrastructure Request to be presented tonight are focused on activities that so support both the sustainability and infrastructure goals of the City Council. Next slide. With the recent staff reorganization, the city is now in a unique position to blend our people, technology, and infrastructure initiatives to maximize their positive impact. Reorganization has also allowed for the removal of some of the historical departmental stove pipes of information to facilitate better internal communication. As part of the reorganization, the branch was able to develop this mental model for how it will address the maintenance of the city's facilities and infrastructure. You'll see along the bottom in green, the block representing our historical reactive maintenance program. This is basically a something breaks, we fix it approach to maintenance. This is a viable option when facilities are newer because there just aren't that many things that break. As we moved into twenty twenty COVID shutdowns and the city passed its fiftieth year anniversary, facilities maintain observed that even without being used, repair work continued to grow. This signaled the need for a strategy change. During twenty twenty-one, a series of facilities assessments and evaluations were completed of the largest buildings. Those attest, assessments took more than a year to complete and led to a strategy shift which will begin in twenty twenty-five. That new strategy will focus more and more on the proactive investment of resources through preventable replacement of key mechanical equipment before it breaks, while also prioritizing making our systems more sustainable and environmentally friendly. This slide represents data associated with the historical maintenance program. Of note, the city's oldest building was constructed almost a hundred and sixty-five years ago in eighteen sixty. The assessment highlights approximately twenty-three million dollars of suggested proactive maintenance that should be scheduled and completed over the next three to five years. This past year, you'll see a variety of work that took place to address those historical break fix, break fix situations, ranging from repairs to foundation and roofs due to leakage, repairs to electric, electrical systems, and emergency HVAC repairs due to severe weather and extreme temperatures. In twenty twenty-five, our new strategy will begin to shift to a much more complex but strategic approach of investing in our infrastructure in a more proactive manner, while still recognizing there will always be an element of break fix maintenance in every organization. Next slide. This graphic represents the shift in strategy. In twenty twenty-five, we begin large projects of proactive maintenance, including, as Amber Till mentioned, facility renovations at Carmody Rec Center and the installation of a solar system at Whitlock Rec Center. The team will also be doing a number of upgrades to HVAC and electrical systems at the maintenance campus. Of course, as mentioned, we will continue to devote resources to taking care of both scheduled and emergency repairs, but plan in the out years that renovations completed or reduce reactive needs and continue to help us focus on our proactive strategy. That'll turn the presentation over to Max Kirschbaum, the Director of Public Works.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Uh next slide, please. The activities of Public Works generally revolve around these three sets of goals that have been outlined by City Council. Next slide. These next two slides, I'm going to focus on projects that have been completed since the twenty twenty-four budget was approved about eleven months ago. It's been an active year, both for design and construction. We have completed sixteen capital improvement projects. Thirteen design projects are complete and ready for award either later this year or into twenty twenty-five. And like, these account for nearly twenty-four million dollars worth of total funding, of which about a half a million was Tabor funds. Uh Holly did a good job early in this presentation of delineating the ways that those Tabor funds are used within Public Works. Uh I'll just add that um Tabor has provided a very stable level of funding from year to year for these kinds of projects. Uh before I move on, let me talk about these two in particular that are depicted in photo, but I'll say in general that the typical projects in this category are projects that focus on sidewalks, shared use paths, and in those two cases, it could be either upgrades or the elimination of gaps in those programs. It includes traffic signals, either the upgrade of some of our two hundred signalized intersections or actually the creation of new signalized intersections, stormwater management, as well as pavement upgrades through our asphalt and concrete programs. In fact, the pavement upgrades account for nearly half of that twenty-three point eight million dollars in funding. In the lower left, you can see one of the projects in our local drainage program. This was a, an erosion problem uh in the vicinity of the ravines open space. On the right side, you see a photo of the first phase of a project on Twentieth Avenue near Nelson, where a culvert had to be extended to facilitate what will eventually be the creation of a sidewalk and an elimination of a sidewalk gap. Next slide. On the left side, you he, you see the North Dry Gulch Phase One. It's been talked about numerous times already uh this evening. Um in twenty twenty-four, we completed e- the first beginning phase of that work. The second part of it will be finished by the end of this year. Most of that work is focused along Fourteenth Avenue. But as we move forward and look, look toward uh awarding the third construction package in twenty twenty-five, the shift in location will move across Colfax Avenue to the north and then begin to head west towards Wadsworth. Uh on the right, you see a sidewalk connection. This is just one of many where we are devoted to following a prioritized system for eliminating sidewalk gaps. Slide, please. If I look at projects that have been started in these last eleven months, again, a very active program. Uh fourteen projects that are underway in design will keep the construction pipeline full. We have nine projects that are under construction as we speak. And these two categories account for eighteen and a half million dollars worth of total funding, with a larger piece this time coming from Tabor funds. Uh before you head forward, pictured here, I'll just say um in the lower left, you'll see uh we are getting close to an award for the addition of a sidewalk along Jewel Avenue adjacent to Kendrick, Kendrick Lake that will eliminate a sidewalk gap. We are in partnership with RTD for a project to uh relight the Sixth Avenue Bridge. And uh another notable uh project that it began in twenty twenty-four, we completed the first six miles of separated bike lanes along three different segments of Lakewood streets, and there will be more uh in the future as we continue that program. Slide, please. As we look ahead in the twenty twenty-five budget, again, another solid year with uh ten projects uh being ready for design. We have sixteen projects, some of which you saw in that earlier slide as design efforts, will now become construction projects. Uh we have a couple that are uh water oriented along Colfax Avenue. Some of those have been delayed uh in previous one or two years as they we have integrated the work of stormwater and water into the Colfax Safety Project. Our roadway maintenance programs will stay steady at about twelve to thirteen million dollars. And that major drainage project you see there is primarily the next phase of North Dry Gulch. And Holly mentioned some of the sources of funds that will help us in that area coming from a loan from the General Fund at a low, low rate of uh interest to pay back that loan over the next twenty years. All told, we have uh over thirty-nine million dollars worth of sidewalk and transportation-related projects coming forward in twenty twenty-five. Slide, please. Looking beyond twenty twenty-five, um the Replacement Maintenance Campus, we've talked about it a couple of times tonight, and I have a slide following this one that talks a little bit more about the eighteen acres that we acquired this uh past summer. Uh and that will, I'll, I'll let you know what is happening in twenty twenty-five with that property. The North Dry Gulch projects will continue through twenty twenty-seven. By the time we get to the end of twenty twenty-seven, we should have completed all, all four phases of construction. We'll continue to focus on the city infrastructure in the same We'll continue to focus on the city infrastructure in the same categories that have prevailed in the last few years: traffic signals, pavements, sidewalks, shared use paths, utilities to include water, sewer, and stormwater systems. You'll see the bottom bullet here is identical to a point I made last year. This is a very slow process working with XL, but we are still working on a project to be able to purchase about 7,700 streetlights that XL currently owns across the city. Now, if I could go to the next slide to give one more snapshot on the Replacement Maintenance Campus, this is a slide you saw when you, City Council saw when we requested approval to proceed with the purchase, and that property did close on July 25th. The areas that you see in blue that are divided by Quail Street just to the south side of the W line, which is in that magenta line, constitute the total acquisition of new properties. We have about $500,000 in the request for 2025 budget, and a majority of that will go to toward the master plan that will talk about what gets built on these properties and what the phasing is, and then there will be follow-on work to talk about how those projects get financed over the next five to 10 years. But that, this master plan is the keystone to putting it all into action. Slide, and I think that's it for me, so I'd like to turn it back over to Holly at this time.
Thank you. This is the end of our presentation for the city budget. The next meeting on the budget will be September 18th with the Budget Audit Board, and October 7th will be the first public hearing, and October 21st, the second public hearing. By charter, as Mayor Strom had mentioned, we need to have an approved budget by November 1st. But before we move on to questions and discussion, I wanted to give thanks to the Budget Audit Board members. The people on the board are three City Council members and three community members. From the City Council, we have Counselor Stewart, who is the Chair of the Board, Mayor Protam Shirazai, Counselor Cruz, and the community members are David Engel, Deborah Hinspark, and Bobby Wolf. Thank you for your insight and discussion on the city finances. Chair Stewart, would you like to say a few words before turning it over to Mayor Strom?
Sure, I don't have, I don't have many words, but I just wanted to echo my thanks to our Budget and Audit Board and wanted to reiterate that last year, we actually started a shift in our process, given some feedback from the Budget and Audit Board members around when the timing of our Budget and Audit Board meeting on the budget would be most helpful. So in previous years before last year, the Budget and Audit Board would have met prior to this City Council study session to do our own study session on the budget. However, there is so much helpful feedback from the City Council, who will ultimately be passing the budget, as well as all of the questions and insights that the Council has in response to and prior to our City Council meetings and study sessions, that the Budget and Audit Board expressed a desire to actually have our meeting after the initial study session so that we can really dig into some of the questions and any concerns that the Council had in the initial presentation of the budget before it gets re-presented at our first public hearing. So that is all I will say tonight is just to reiterate that process. So your Budget and Audit Board Committee members, our community members are actually on listening so that they can hear what everyone has to say, any questions that may need to be revisited or answered at a later date, any concerns that folks have that we can actually dig into at our meeting on Wednesday, so that they are all here listening diligently. I'm taking notes and really, really appreciate our finance staff and all of our staff for putting together this budget that really does reflect a lot of our priorities for the City Council. We're incredibly appreciative and also just want to reiterate how important and helpful it is to get your questions in early. I know there were about five counselors who got questions in early and just reading them for me was incredibly helpful. And interestingly enough, a lot of us had similar questions. So I would really encourage all of us to actually read those questions and answers, especially, you know, if you haven't glanced at them, glance at them now because they're probably going to answer a lot of the same questions that you might have and can help us to move this study session along into a more productive way. So that's all I will say. Thank you so much.
All right, and we do have just a little bit over a half an hour left of our meeting this evening. Do we have any council questions or discussion so far this evening? I, well, before I open up the floor, actually, I do want to stop. I know that this process is a very long and not easy process. I want to, I know hours upon hours upon hours have put into this, all levels of staff across the organization, and sacrifices are made and gains are made in other places. And we want to be very thankful for the time that you guys have also put in. You did an amazing job of distilling this down to something that we all, you know, we signed up for this job, and part of that job was to make sure that we're making improvements across our community. And this book is not easy to see what those are, and I appreciate that you guys have distilled it down to really turning it back around to the things that we talked about earlier this year. But even in years before, it's fun to see some of these projects evolve. So thank you all of you for everything that you have put into the last few months of putting this together for us. Do we have any council questions this evening? All right, that means we did a great job. Everybody submitting them early. Oh, there goes, that, Counselor Beer, you're up.
Well, I'm not sure if it's a question, more like some thoughts and comments. Is that something we want to jump into too?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well, certainly if the Budget Audit Board is meeting and going to be kind of going over what comments and whatnot are made here today, then I'd love to just throw out a couple of things. First, just want to thank everyone for presentations and Holly for answering all the questions, and just want to thank you for that. Really appreciate all the work everybody's doing. I know this is not the most fun part of working in local governments dealing with the budgeting, so especially on an annualized basis. So anyway, just want to thank you all for that. One, and one comment to Public Works, just want to say I'm really pumped about the streetlights conversation that's coming up. I'm glad to see that we continue to make progress on that front. That's something that's been a long time coming. But one question I had was, well, not really a question, but a comment for the board, is related to protected bike lanes. I'd love to see that dollar amount go up. Frankly, I think we really need vehicle miles traveled reductions, so we need to hit real important targets. I think we have over 100 miles of bike lanes in the city, and I'm really excited about the, the number of miles that we got this year, but it's going to take a really long time to get, you know, a lot of protected bike lanes throughout the city at this sort of pace. So I'd love to take a look at increasing that. And that's just something that's sort of on the forefront of my mind. And then another, and then a question I guess I had was related to incentives. I think Holly and her team said that there was $350,000 increase in incentives for Community Sustainability Climate and Zero Waste Division. I was just curious what those incentives were for, if anybody has that answer.
Travis, is that something you could speak to?
Sorry, my connection is cutting in and out. Counselor Labir, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, it was just related, I was told that there is $350,000 increase in incentives, and I was just curious what the incentives are for.
Absolutely.
For residents, I think, maybe?
Absolutely. There's a number of programs that we're looking at, starting with that $350,000, and it, it will be in a bunch of different areas. We're looking at residential incentives for energy efficiency. We're looking at energy audits, and we're looking at tree canopy projects, among many other possibilities there.
Okay, great, thanks. And I think that's mostly the questions I have or comments for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Shirazai.
Yes, thank you. In the, in that same spirit, I really appreciated how many similar questions we had. I think to me, it was a great signal that we're all sort of on the same page and trying to advance the same goals. One thing that came up for, I think at least three of us, is just around the coresponders piece. So in reviewing our goals, we talked about like a continued assessment of staffing levels for addressing our needs around the unhoused population, and was really surprised to see that there wasn't any sort of staffing increase for that. And then around code enforcement as well, which I don't know what it's like for you all in your ward, but I could tell you in Ward 1, this is a big deal. So those were things that I, I wondered if the conversation could continue on. And I had a couple of questions just around like the residential parking permit, because there is an allocation of funding or expense for the budget, but if we're not increasing those places for staffing, then where does that live? So, and I'll follow up online, but just wanted to signal particularly around the coresponders because there was enough of us that, and I imagine there is going to be a couple more coming in on that topic. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Counselor Low.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just ask a process question as a, as someone who's going through this process for the first time. I'm, I'm just far enough into this that I suspect that asking this question in the study session rather than later in the process might be strategic. So just taking the, the two things that came up as an example, protected bike lanes or coresponders, I'm not signaling any, any intention to do this, but just as a, as a process point of clarification, if a counselor, multiple counselors wanted to offer an amendment specifically on either of those line items, I assume that happens on second reading? And can, can folks with the city who, who are veterans of the process just speak to like when such an amendment should be flagged for city staff and how it's mechanically done? Because one of the things that struck me again going through this process for the first time is the ordinance itself that we're passing is quite short and doesn't speak to all the detail, but it sort of signals that we're passing the budget. So I guess my, my question, just very mechanically, can you, like, can a counselor offer an amendment on second reading in, in theory that is detailed enough to get, say, to protected bike lanes or coresponder that doesn't amend the ordinance but amends the budget? How does that happen procedurally, and by when should such an amendment be flagged for the mayor and the city manager and staff?
Kathy?
Toddson, Ms. Bearcom.
Yeah, I'll take a run at that. Can, can you hear me? Great. So, yes, so you know, the final vote is with the second hearing, so it would be most helpful to have whatever kind of amendments or changes that you'd like to see by the first reading. So it gives us time to make sure that language is finalized for the second reading. We can do it on the fly. That's not to say we can't. We can, it's just easier and it's smoother to have that information ready at first reading for that conversation as well.
Thank you. So I assume it would be optimal for like an amendment to be shared with, with you, Kathy, and I'm guessing also with Counselor Stewart, with the mayor. Should it be sent to all of council? I mean, do you have a recommendation on just what makes the process go more, more or less smooth?
The more, the more opportunity you have to discuss it with your counselors in advance, the better off we are. Certainly, you can send it to the mayor and send it to me. We'll probably want to send it to the city attorney as well for the language, so it's written into, I'm ready for the second hearing. With Counselor Stewart's role as the Chair of the Budget Audit Committee, I would recommend it going to her too. So I would say those four, and then we can distribute it to all of council.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Sorry about my voice.
Also, I just wanted to mention, in case you were aware, for the first reading, we do have a presentation and discussion. So it's not like other first readings where you don't discuss the, the topic.
Thank you.
And I mean, I want to add to that. That's a really good point. The first reading as it relates to the budget is different. It's an actual public hearing. So I guess I should have said that with my first response. So it's, it's just like a second reading, but it's the first time to have that conversation.
Counselor Stewart?
Yeah, I would echo that and encourage anyone who is considering any of that to please join us on Wednesday for our Budget and Audit Board meeting. To be clear, we don't do public comment during Budget and Audit, so any non-members, even if you sit on the City Council, unfortunately, will not be allowed to participate actively in the meeting. But I would love, like tonight, I've been furiously writing, I think it's very clear that we're probably going to have a robust conversation on Wednesday about our protective bike lanes budget, at the very least, and some opportunities around that. So if anyone has flags about anything like that, the most helpful thing would be for the Budget and Audit Board to be able to discuss it and actually bring questions to staff so that we can, you know, I mean, sometimes there's a good reason why something isn't there, and that's also really helpful information as well, you know? The, the, the budget is a big, it's a big beast, and legislating this, this guy on the fly is not optimal. So, yeah, would love a heads up sooner rather than later, and would love to be able to roll any concerns into our conversation on Wednesday, if at all possible, and it would be helpful for folks to join us as well, I think, and just hear that conversation if you are available.
Thank you, Counselor Stewart, Counselor Ryan.
Picking up on Counselor Lowe's comment, and thank you, Chair Stewart, for all the work that you and the entire committee put on this and staff for this excellent material. The comment was made that if we want to make a line item change, how do we do that? And I think the process is, thank you for explaining that. Where would I even find the line item for a particular budget? I mean, obviously, for the capital improvement pieces, I see that the material is extensive as it is. I'm not sure how I see where the line items would be. It says, you know, personnel and services, capital outlay, debt services, you know, that kind of detail. And I get we really should be focusing on the, the higher level piece. And I'm, again, like Counselor Lowe mentioned, I'm not signaling that I want to make any changes, but to the extent someone does want to propose some changes or we see something in there, I want to at least understand where I find the information to, to see where people are looking at and on what changes they're making or suggesting that we might. Does that make sense?
Yes, so if you have a particular area that you want to understand or make sure is included in the budget or is not included in the budget, you can ask that through the question process and what's included, what's not included, so then you can frame around that, what you would like to request in terms of a change.
And, and I appreciate that. That's, that's helpful. My, I'm literally so new at this that I don't know what I don't know. And so to even know what I should even ask, and that's why I was wondering if there's a place that I can go to find that more granular. to find that more granular detail. So that if someone does call and suggests, hey, we should make a change to this, I can look to see where it is we're doing, or do all those requests need to come to you? I'm trying not to take up more staff time than you've already generously provided in helping us prepare this budget.
Well, the budget book is the source, but that's what we're here for, is to help you. So if you can't find what you want, then we're happy to identify where it is in the book or if it's not detailed in the book, provide the detail to you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody. We've got two more quick agenda items before we adjourn this evening. Before I hand it over to committee reports, so let me tease that idea. Any of you that are chairing committees, if you have anything you'd like to report back to the group, we'll do that in a second. But first, I wanted to ask everybody to take a second to open up your calendars. We need to discuss doing another executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation for real estate purchases. And was hoping to get something on the calendar Thursday morning. Ms. Hodgson, would you like to give any additional information about that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So last Friday, last Friday, we met with the school board and learned a lot about what the school board members think about the disposition of these properties. And as a result of that, we've had several conversations, one-on-ones, between myself and several of you with the thought that we just want to really finalize our approach in terms of these negotiations for these properties. So it would be just a touch point. It would be a short conversation just to make sure that we're all still aligned with our next steps as it relates to communications with the school staff who are working on the disposition process.
Thank you. So I'd like to start by proposing 10:00 AM on Thursday. This would be a virtual meeting only, potentially as short as a half an hour. So if 10:00 AM works for you on your schedule, maybe we could do... Okay, we see several no's. So let's try, what if we did it first thing on Thursday morning, 8:00 AM? Ooh, we got more yeses.
Oh, councillor Nice, John?
Yeah, I'm going to be attending a solar app presentation at Enrel that morning from 8:30 to 11:30, I believe.
Since this is virtual, you can call in by phone if you wanted to do that. You won't need to be at City Hall for this.
Yeah, understood. I don't, that's going to be an option for me. Thanks, Roger. Just kidding.
All right. Well, since we saw the majority of yeses in 8:00 AM, let's go ahead and move forward with that on Thursday. So Mr. Rob, if the Clerk's Office could send out the appropriate information, get the meeting posted as needed, then we'll wait to hear from you and plan to be available on Thursday morning at 8:00.
Yep. Thanks for adding that, Mayor. We'll route the special meeting request for a signatures.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then, thank you, everybody, for that. And we'll move on then to committee reports. Do you have any committee reports this evening? Councillor Cruz and Councillor Mayor Garo.
Thank you. Just wanted to report that our Legislative Committee, with a lot of help from staff, hosted our Legislative Breakfast last Thursday. We had Majority Leader Monica Duran and Representative Sheila Leder in attendance, and as well as several councillors, our city manager, our Assistant City Manager. So it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful time. We talked about a lot of important issues, from housing to pedestrian safety, to cap fees and everything in between, and was a really fruitful time. So thank you, everybody, who made time to come. And if anybody wasn't there and has any questions, feel free to reach out. We also have an updated set of priorities for Legislative Committee that we have adopted as well. So if you have any questions about that, please let me know. And thank you to my amazing committee and to Mr. Goldstein for all your support on that committee. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Cruz. Councillor Matt Gro.
Yeah, the HPC Housing Policy Commission met last Thursday and began a deeper dive on the potential of an inclusionary zoning policy in Lakewood. Our next meeting is on Thursday, October 24th. I will wait. Like looking at Roger, he always has our schedules. That's what's in my calendar. Yes. Our next meeting is Thursday, October 24th.
October 3rd.
Yep, just kidding. Sorry, I scrolled right past it because it said two weeks. Our next meeting is October 3rd. Thank you so much for the correction. And we have two meetings in October, so that we then don't have meetings in November, because both with election season and then Thanksgiving, it's hard for us to find a Thursday, which is when we typically meet. So our next meeting is October 3rd. We're going to continue our conversation about inclusionary zoning, sort of on principle and values, and then also like starting to work out what next steps of that process might be, both from like staffing and ordinance planning kind of perspective, but also from public engagement perspective. We will have 30 minutes available for public comment at the top of that meeting, if folks are interested in that. And we'll have sort of guiding questions for that conversation that will be posted.
Thank you. Any other committee report? All right. Well, see, no further business. We will go ahead and adjourn the study session this evening, tonight at 7:43 PM. And we will see everybody back here to start our Holy Goodbye Investment Authority meeting at 8:00 PM. So 10, what, 17 minutes, stretch legs, move around, get some water, and we'll see you back on the big screen in a few minutes. We're staying on the same link, right?
Yep, same link, Mayor. And the LRA agenda does allow us to just segue straight into that. If you want to take five minutes, that may give us some time to get the outside commissioners on the line. Is that what, is that why other hands were raised? Okay.
We have Ms. Kenworthy on now.
Right.
So check back in. Well, how long?
Should we come back at maybe 7:50?
Perfect.
Okay. So same Zoom link, you all can log off or, you know, cameras and mics off as you choose. Thanks, everyone. Standby.
I'm still not seeing our other three outside LRA commissioners. So. We may just have to wait another 10. Right, okay, so we just make that call, everyone come back. At eight. Sound good? So you're on mute. I think she is on mute, so.
Sorry, I have two levels of mute. I have the phone and I have the Zoom, I unmuted one and here we are still on mute, so thank you both. Sorry about that, that that works just fine for me.
Okay.
Coming back at eight.
Okay.
We don't have everybody on yet, so we're delaying a few more minutes.
So we'll come back at eight o'clock, okay, thanks, Mayor. Hi Commissioner Wolfram, welcome. Hang on real real quick and we will be starting at eight o'clock.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if I was the only one here or not.
Yeah, we were waiting for, you know, for the outside commissioners to join. So hang tight and and we'll get started here shortly.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, sorry I couldn't come early, I just saw that, so sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you. Mayor Strom, the only commissioner I haven't seen is Commissioner Baraway. And I'm not sure. If she was planning on attending.
I heard that she will not be able to attend this evening, and so just so you.
Great, thanks, Robert.
You're welcome.
So we don't need, yeah, we don't need another countdown. Once we have everyone kind of rejoining, we can get started.
I'll give it a second till I see faces, so we know we're all here. Okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone, and with that, I will go ahead and call. To order the virtual Lakewood Reinvestment Authority study session this evening on September 16, 2024, at eight o'clock PM. So for those looking to connect with the meeting online, you can reuse the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. You'll also find additional information for this meetings or this evening's meeting, backup information as well that we'll be going through this evening. Also available on LakewoodSpeaks.org is the ability to leave online public comments, you can post comments of any length on Lakewood Speaks. Through tomorrow morning at 10 a.m., so any comments that you may have this evening, they'll be to throw that up and or if watching this on Wednesday morning as well. And with that, I will hand the floor over to the clerk, Mr. Rob, will you please call the law?
Strom.
Here.
Baraway is absent. Cruz.
Here.
Kenworthy.
Here.
Kerr.
Here.
LeBure.
Here.
Mayakorero.
Here.
Aystrom.
Here.
Over, I believe Counselor Over is absent. Rhine.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
And Wolfram.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. And this evening, we have a presentation coming to us from Mr. Robert Smith, the Executive Director of the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority. I'll make a quick note, so far tonight, we do not have any comments there that are posted as of right now on LakewoodSpeaks.org. Mr. Smith, I will hand over the floor for you and your potentially very exciting PowerPoint presentation this evening for the overview of the 2025 LRA proposed budget and our revised 2024 budget.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, that's very kind of you and perhaps a bit hyperbolic as well, but we will do our best to try to make it interesting for the LRA budget. Thank you so much, Chair Strom and Commissioners, the LRA Commissioners. This is a couple of times that we've been through the budget with our expanded board and very happy to have our all of our constituents or all of our Commissioners here. I just wanted to make sure that you are looking at the correct budget, so there's some subtle differences between the two budgets, the city budget and the LRA budget. This is what the the city budget looks like, and then just to be able to compare, this is what the LRA budget looks like. So make sure you're holding the correct one in your hand or looking at it digitally. By the way, if anybody would like to get a copy of this on printed form so that you can take a look at it, happy to put that in your hands and take a look at it in the printed format. But with that, I will. Launch the PowerPoint and we will get going here and talk about, give a quick introduction to an overview of the LRA budget for this upcoming year and revised for 2024. I assume that folks can see this on the screen, can I get a thumbs up from somebody to let me know that they can see that is on here? Well, let's just not waste any more time, let's jump in. And there's the cover of it, you'll notice that on the cover of this is the Creekside Project or the Wadsworth and Colfax area. Just so you know, it wraps up its increment capture in 2024, we've talked about that several times, we talked about the increment capture in Alameda 1. That wrapped up in 2023, received money for the 2023 a year in arrears because of the property tax collection. So we actually received the revenues in 2024 for 2023, that one will be absolutely complete in 2024. The Creekside Project will also have that same sort of a thing, a year in arrears, collecting those 2024 property tax dollars in 2025. But with the with the. Budget on here, the back cover kind of shows you the beginnings of the Creekside Project, so you get kind of the before and after. So on the back cover of the of the 2025 budget, you get Creekside back in 2002, 2003, when we just got going on the project, and then you see it on the front cover in 2025. We'll also be doing a case study recap of that tomorrow evening with our good friends from the Downtown Colorado Inc., our organization, and we're doing a a. URA 101 here in Lakewood, here at the City Hall tomorrow, and we'll be talking about this just a little bit more in depth. But that's what's on the cover and that's why it's there, there's a couple of features in the 2025 budget, we added them on last year, but I wanted to go ahead and point them out again this year. There is a page that has a map that you can see there on the left and the four current urban renewal project areas on the on that left-hand page that you're seeing there. And then on the right-hand page, the feature, you really can't see it up on this slide, but there's a fun balance for each of those geographic areas inside the budget so that you understand what dollars are available for each of those geographic areas. You may recall that we talked a lot about urban renewal and urban renewal areas, project areas, the dollars that are collected in those areas have to be expended or deployed in those areas. So dollars that we receive on Alameda, we can't spend on Colfax and vice versa, all of the dollars that we receive in the Colfax area need to be spent in the Colfax area. That's why we added that budget feature on so that you can take a look at it, we'll talk about that a little bit more in depth as we go along. Here's some potential tasks for the 2024, 2025 years coming up, we need to approve an operating budget that's required by the state, and we need to submit that approved budget to DOLA. The study session this evening is the first study session, there's only one study session with the LRA budget. And then we have a resolution to be considered on October the 21st, which is also the same evening you're considering a resolution for the city budget. Of course, there's one meeting in between for the city budget, that's not required of the LRA, so we don't have that second meeting, there's only two meetings altogether for the LRA. We're going to work with the existing and the potential new urban renewal project areas, we have a short summary on all the existing areas, those are the ones that pertain to this budget. We're also planning to bring forward for council consideration, a new area, we've been talking about it for quite some time, along the Sheridan Corridor. And so that will be coming to council, hopefully before the end of the year, that's our goal right at the moment. When we do that, because of the House Bill 151348, it requires us to get intergovernmental agreements with all of the taxing entities that are in that area. And so we'll be looking to approve those IGAs and new URA project areas with the council and with the LRA Board of Commissioners. And then we'll be talking about some property acquisitions in some of our existing areas. Don't want to be telegraphed too far in front of that because we have to buy things at market rate, if we say, hey, we're interested in buying this thing, too early speculative sorts of things start to happen there. And so what we're just going to say at this point is that we're going to considering some property acquisitions or will be putting forward to council some potential property acquisitions in the upcoming months. And then lastly, we could consider additional programs, deploying funds in a different way, and we normally do that through supplemental budget appropriations. In other words, most of the things that we do in the LRA, the budget itself is pretty workmanlike, it's just the the mechanics of what we need to do on an operating basis. And if we want to do something else in their special undertaking or activity, we bring that to the LRA Board of Commissioners and they approve that separately with a budget supplemental budget appropriation. In the case of this particular budget, we have an element that's been added to the budget for your consideration in the proposed budget. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but most years, we don't have those considerations just in the budget, we have them separate. Let's talk about all of the areas in in particular, the Alameda Corridor reinvestment area, you can see it on the map there, it's the area that has that kind of golden halo around it, kind of hugs Alameda, wraps around the Belmar area. The former Chalet Motel is in that area, we've talked a lot about that in the past, we've done some Alameda bid grants, they've done a tremendous job of of deploying those. We got to thank our friends at the Alameda Bid for deploying most of those. In the letter that we have inside the budget, kind of recapping it, my recollection is they had about 12 grants available from the $300,000 master grant that the LRA Board approved in 2024. They deploy or excuse me, in 2023, they worked on those in 2024, about 10 of them are out the are committed, six of them have already been deployed, and that's all thanks to our friends in the Alameda Bid. So we thank them for their hard work in getting that done. And then we're revolving loan fund, and we'll probably be talking about that more over the course of the year, the revolving loan fund hasn't really taken off the way that we hoped it would. And so we may have to be doing some modifications to that program, and we'll talk about those with the board in the in the upcoming months. The Alameda Core One, or excuse me, the Alameda Corridor reinvestment area one has the chalet, as I mentioned, you can see some pictures on the left of what that looked like previously. Kind of the graffiti you see on the outside there, what has happened since then is we've acquired that property, we did environmental mitigation, we actually demolished those structures there, and now there's a vacant lot out on Alameda. That's one of the basic functions of the LRA is to mitigate blinding conditions, so we took away the opportunity for criminality, for degradation of that property. And now we've got a vacant lot out there, and you can see on there, on that vacant lot, there is a sign, that sign has a QR code, and we'll talk about where that QR code leads if you take your camera and you take a look at it. But that's one of the major projects in the Investment One area, as we did, I mentioned, we wrapped up the increment capture in 2023, dollars came in in 2024, in 2025, that'll be all wrapped up from the increment capture portion of the of the project. Moving on to the Colfax-Wadsworth reinvestment areas, I mentioned, that's also called Creekside, that's what's on the cover this year, you can see it in that yellow halo just north of Colfax, it's on the north side of Colfax, on the corner of Wadsworth and Colfax. We're going to complete the Creekside undertaking in 2024, so just as a reminder, in the LRA speak, a project area is all of the area, so all of the properties that are considered there. An undertaking or activity is something specific that we're doing within that project area. So I do my best not to refer to things that most people would call projects as undertakings or activities to remain consistent with that with that language. Area number two is Belmar, that's the Alameda Corridor area number two, it's on a slightly different clock than Alameda 1, it will wrap up in 2025 in terms of its increment capture over there. But again, that year in arrears will be receiving funds for the 2025 year in 2026 to finish up with the Belmar project, most of that is reimbursement. I did want to mention, even though this is an LRA meeting, I often get the question, there is a PIF associated with with Belmar, the LRA and the PIF are not working in together. In other words, the LRA doesn't have anything to do with the PIF, the PIF is a city function, a property function in there. And so just so folks know, just because the area is wrapping up there, doesn't mean a wrap up of that PIF at the exact same time. The West Colfax Corridor reinvestment area, a little more than 700 properties in there, you can see the yellow halo that runs all the way along the Colfax Corridor, usually a block or two to either side of Colfax. Couple of the projects that we're still working on there, station betterment program, we did take out loans for that, and we're paying those loans back through the increment that we're capturing in that area. It's the former Blue Sky Motel, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment, the Westland redevelopment, you'll recall a little earlier in the year, counts are, excuse me, the the Commission. The Border Commissioners approved a demolition of some of those Westland structures, and I'll talk about where we're at with regard to that. But tho- tho- those dollars, those expenditures in this particular area, and as I mentioned, we talked about some potential property acquisitions, we're really looking to the west side of Wadsworth for some opportunities, and we hope those opportunities will come forward. If we can get far enough along on one of those opportunities, we'll certainly bring it to the Board of Commissioners to talk about it the same way that we talked about the Blue Sky and the same way that we talked about the Chalet in 2023. This is the Blue Sky, some of the before pictures over there, you can see it's very degraded, very graffiti riddled sort of a property, lots of damage and and just general iciness about it. So we managed to mitigate the environmental conditions that are over there, we removed those buildings, demolished those buildings, so there's no longer an opportunity for the criminality that we faced in the past with that. And then you've got that sign on there with that QR code, and if you're wondering where that QR code goes, we've got a website that talks a little bit about each of those projects. And we've got two reports that are now mounted on the website, and you're more than welcome to take a look at those. We will be putting out an RFP before the end of the year for both of those projects, we'll be asking developers, investors, those that are interested in redeveloping those properties to come forward with their best proposals. Part of that arrangement are these documents, which talk a little bit about the market area in each of those in those areas. They talk about the demographics and the residential conditions or the potential for residential conditions, they talk about the commercial conditions, demand estimates, what what do we think would be commercially successful or residentially successful in those areas? And then there's kind of some highest. Um, and then there's kind of some highest and best use scenarios inside those, those, uh, reports in there. And we'll be putting those out as part of the RFP in the upcoming months before the end of the year. Uh, this is the one that I wanted to talk about a little bit because we've got a proposal to augment our Colfax Street Safety Project, a road safety project. And, uh, uh, Max talked a little bit about this project earlier in the evening, um, with the council budget and whatnot. You see the picture that's up on the screen and it demonstrates really what the difficulty is or much of the difficulty in that area. You can see a pedestrian moving across in the middle of the block. You can see a bicyclist moving, uh, across the, the, uh, area in the middle of the block. Um, it's a very dangerous area essentially between Sher- Sheridan and Wadsworth in, in that particular area. And so there's a safety project in, in play there. There's, uh, grand from, uh, several funding sources, but one of the grants comes from CDOT, uh, and those dollars will put it in there. And so the recommendation is, is that the LRA contribute another million and a half to that, leverage that, uh, those dollars in order to mitigate blight out there. And I'll talk a little bit about how that blight mitigation would work. Many of you may have seen this in, uh, Looking at Lakewood Edition that came out in the last couple of weeks is this, uh, diagram shows some of the, uh, features of this safety project. And so a raised median in the middle of the street, uh, tends to cause folks not to want to cross mid-block because then you'd have to climb up on the median and climb down on the median. Uh, there are those that would attempt it, of course, but for the most part, they don't. Having some fencing along those same areas to drive, uh, pedestrian traffic down to the lights and be able to cross with the lights, have a great expectation of the, of the traffic flow in there will help to, we hope, uh, save injuries and, and lives on that, on that corridor. And those are some of the, uh, blight factors that we would be mitigating in there. There's amenities like, uh, uh, some, uh, uh, street furniture, some street, uh, pedestrian sorts of things. There's new lighting involved with this project, so a lot more lighting on there, which also creates a safety for that, for that area. There are places that are set aside for art. As you know, we've used art as an economic development tool in the past. Uh, art would still be used as an economic development tool, but it also mitigates blighting conditions in the, in the corridor. Some of the areas would be included along the art line in there. And then you see that safety fencing to keep folks from, uh, pedestrians on the sidewalk, from crossing the street at, uh, unsafe places and also giving a level of protection for those that are walking or pedestrians on that street frontage. So that's one of the things, 1.5 million dollars is the LRA contribution or the proposed LRA contribution to go forward there. Also talk about Westland. We talked about that a little earlier in the year. Those buildings are still, uh, out there, still up. You can see them on the Colfax and Owens Corridor. It's the three buildings that are in red. Folks have said, you know, hey, I thought the idea was to expedite this. It's absolutely the idea behind that, uh, that process. It's just a very complicated process because of basically asbestos in these buildings. And so the state requires a great level of handling that asbestos carefully. We can't just go in, knock it down, let the asbestos fly wherever it needs to fly. It needs to go very systematically and unfortunately that just takes time. So the expedited, uh, demolition of these buildings is in, in progress. It's moving forward. You really can't see it from the street, but every day we're making progress to the point where at some point we'll have a celebratory sort of a, of a meeting up there where the, the first of the, uh, the crunch shovels will start taking down those buildings and we're hoping that sooner than later. Um, but again, we're working with the state in terms of that, uh, environmental mitigation or that asbestos mitigation on the site. That concludes my presentation on the, uh, 2024 revised and 2025, uh, proposed budget. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen. I'm happy to take, uh, any questions or any discussion that you have at this point. We have obviously got about a month or so before, um, we will be coming in to, uh, to think about this or, uh, uh, pass this with a resolution, uh, happening on that 21st day of October. Um, but for the most part, that's the, uh, the highs and lows of the budget. And so I will turn it back over to Chair Strom and happy to be here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, with that, I will hand it over to Commissioner Sharzai.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't know that I know the answer to this, but what, I know everything is captured in arrears and that many of our corridors are, uh, almost complete. Is there a timeline for which we have to spend the money down or is that really up to us? Like I know this year and next year will be the end of when we're capturing the revenue, but what happens with those fund balances? Is there a time clock ticking?
Statutorily, we need to, uh, deploy that capital, uh, as the increment pick, uh, period winds up. So the, the general idea is, is that if it's ending in 2025, that we've expended all of the funds or deployed all of the funds that, that are, uh, involved with that particular project. So, uh, the short answer is, is that the timeline goes, coincides with the end of that, uh, that, that period. And so even though we're collecting revenues in the year, uh, in the subsequent year, all of that money needs to be committed or deployed or there is an active action to deploy those dollars by the time the increment wraps up.
So the Alameda Corridor that's wrapping up in 2024 has a plan to spend it down to zero?
Right, correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions this evening? Commissioner Cruz, then Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you. Two questions. Um, appreciate the presentation and all of the broken out areas as well. And I noted that that was new and it's all new to me, so it was just helpful. So thank you. Um, uh, the question I had was will there be any impacts from, um, the special section, session or any of the property tax pieces on, on any of these, um, budgetary implications?
Uh, you bet. They all have a, have an effect on there. Of course, we're, we're monitoring that and I've got to, I do it right now. I just got to tip my hat to, to the folks that actually get all of the numbers put together in the budget. So Matthew Wasserberger and Patrick O'Brien and, and Jacob Thielen, and of course our own Treasurer, LRA Treasurer, Holly Bjorklund, those are the folks that, uh, put those together. And so they're very much watching what happens in that special session and how property taxes, uh, are worked. The mill levy is really what happens in the LRA. And we've talked about it a little bit. I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but the increment really has to do with the mill levy that's associated with those properties. So the value of the properties and the mill level, mill levies at which they're collected, um, have an effect on the overall increment that is collected and put towards the, uh, LRA or the Urban Renewal Authority. So that, that, they do have an effect on those, on those particular areas, but we're, we're monitoring that so we understand what our revenues coming in will be and how we can deploy that.
Okay, that's helpful. So there may can like be changes by the next time we see this on that based on what was just passed then?
You bet. One of the advantages of the LRA is that the, the, our urban renewal areas is that they don't create any new taxes. It's still the same mill levy that it's always been, but as the legislature adjusts mill levies and, 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 uh, its co, its alignment with the Gallagher Amendment and where that goes, that adjusts what that increment level is. And, and of course, uh, that increment is what the LRA deploys in order to mitigate blight. So that those dollars do fluctuate based on how those, those dollars and what's counted into the, uh, collection of those mill levies.
Thank you. Yeah, that's helpful and we'll look forward to kind of seeing what those impact, well, maybe not look forward, but interested to seeing what those impacts, um, will be. And then my second question, which is maybe not, is totally a, a hundred percent a budget question, but since you brought it up, wanted to ask, I'm really appreciated you highlighting the, um, studies on the highest and best use cases. Just curious if we as a committee will be kind of talking about. I really appreciated that there were some like mission-driven highest and best use cases, um, that had, um, some really interesting prospects, I think, on both quarters and wondering, um, how we'll be kind of considering some of the recommendations in that report.
You bet. Well, what we'll do is we, we will put out the, uh, request for proposals, uh, to the, uh, the investment community. Um, I, I don't know what the response will be. So let's say that there are zero responses to it. We wouldn't call us a moment to say, hey, we, we don't have any proposals to try to work with. But let's say we got 10 proposals on there. What we would do is bring that forward and say, here are the 10 proposals. Here's the one that the staff recommends going forward with. Um, and from there, those proposals would then, we would, uh, very much as the staff, convert those into a development agreement in terms of an actual contract that has teeth to make that, make that work. And so it would be up to the LRA either through the board or through the staff to be able to determine which, which of those we would want to make, uh, the, the preferred developer, if you will. And so that process may be more consultative with the whole of the, of the, uh, commission here or the, uh, Board of Commissioners, or it may be one where we're bringing that forward. The development agreement is what the board would vote on at that point. So, um, we're in that process. We don't know just yet. We're going to put out that request for proposal by the end of the year and then we will update the, uh, the commissioners in terms of, hey, here's where we're at and this is what we'd like to do. If we only had one, then we say, does that make some sense to go forward with that? Or do we keep our powder dry and try to do something in the, in the future with this, this site? So, uh, bottom line is, is that the process is to be determined. So exactly where we wind up with that, we're, uh, not sure at this point, but a lot of that has to do with what the private sector's response to that request for proposal looks like.
Thank you.
You bet.
Counselor Ryan.
Uh, Commissioner Ryan. Almost forgot to unmute. Sorry about that. And, uh, Counselor Cruz asks excellent questions there, so that, that helps my, my, uh, piece too. I just want to signal as to the respect to the last point that I think Counselor Cruz was, or Commissioner Cruz was, uh, bringing up, uh, is that I'd like us to consider not just whoever's offering the highest amount of money, but who's going to provide probably the best impact for the community. Um, obviously money's going to be a factor in that, but I also want to see, you know, what's being proposed and how that, uh, fits in the, uh, community and, and especially in terms of things that they may have, may, may be lacking in that, in that area. Um, and not more of the same, uh, types of businesses that we've seen in the past. The, the second piece is with respect to the, uh, the, uh, West Colfax Safety or Street Safety Project. I, I understand that that whole project has had a lot of budget pressures, uh, and have had to make some, uh, hard decisions. To the extent that there's money and the LRA that might be able to help, um, fill some of those gaps with respect to design, especially, I, I think it's phase two or is it phase three? I don't, you'll, you'll have to help me there. Uh, to the extent that we can make sure that when this project is all done, considering the enormous amount of money the city is putting into this, that this is ultimately not just a functional utilitarian, uh, design, but this is something that we can all be proud of and kind of fits in the, uh, the mantra that's being pushed by a number of organizations of greening your infrastructure and making it pedestrian-friendly and, and friendly to the community. I'd really like us to consider that to the extent we need to chip in a little bit more money if there, if that's available in, in the budget, I'd certainly like us to consider that moving forward.
You bet. The, the proposed amount is really what we, we felt was the appropriate amount to, uh, to help leverage what was, uh, there, at least in this immediate run. As you know, the whole Colfax Corridor is that long, uh, lane, long thing from Sheridan all the way out to, uh, you know, Sims out on that side of it. And so, uh, putting all of the dollars into one side or the other side or this project or that project, we really want to get as much bang for the buck as we possibly can. So, uh, obviously we keep an eye on that, that sort of a thing. We want it to be successful, just as you do, and we're going to work very hard to make certain it's, uh, successful. And so, uh, we think we're appropriately, uh, matched at this point, but, uh, to the